Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members. Today is Tuesday, May 21, and it is a regular consolidated City Council meeting, and this is the proposed department budget presentation. The time is 3:02, and we will do a roll call, please. Councilmember Vera.
President.
Councilmember Puza.
President.
Councilmember Erickson.
President.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
President.
And Mayor McMoran.
Here.
All members are present.
Can we all sign for the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, with no bounds, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any community announcements from colleagues? Councilmember Vera.
Just a reminder, Mayor, that I have to leave today at 4:30. Other than that, none. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Erickson.
Nothing.
Councilmember Puza.
No, Mayor, thanks.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
No, Mayor, thank you.
Are there any additional updates from commissions, commission, excuse me, commission boards and/or committees, or any items from staff?
No.
Okay. Let's move on to joint public comment.
Are you sure she's such a woman?
Yes, we have one speaker sign up for items not on the agenda. Dylan Foster.
Hello. I came here to advocate for a little bit less funding in the police portion of the budget and more funding for literally everything else. This budget looks, you know, I mean, it's a smaller budget, but it looks a lot like, when you break it down into percentages, what last year's L.A. city budget looked like. And that budget failed miserably because it underfunded everything that people needed and overfunded the police. That's all I have for my comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Just making sure nobody else signed up. If you don't, you can. No.
That's the end of our speakers.
Thank you. Can we have a motion for receipt and filing of correspondence?
I have a motion by Councilmember Vera, a second by Vice Mayor O'Brien. All members who are in the room have voted. That motion passes four ayes minus Councilmember Erickson.
Okay, my screen is not scrolling down, but I assume the next, we're just moving to our agenda item, which is continuation of the budget.
Correct. And for this evening, we will begin with transportation, followed by human resources, finances, and then the city manager's office. So today, we're going to start off with transportation. And we have Diana Chang here, and I am going to share my screen momentarily.
Thank you, Jeremy. Good afternoon, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and members of the City Council. This is Diana Chang, City's Chief Transportation Officer, and I'm here to present an overview of the Transportation Department's fiscal year '25 budget. I'm joined here by members of my leadership team, including Deputy Director Officer, Deputy Transportation Officer Tamara Fuhrer, Transit and Mobility Planning Manager Dorothy Suchikova, Transit Operations Manager Nestor Du Crux, Fleet Services Manager Allison Cohen, Administrative Services Senior Management Analyst Gabe Garcia, and Management Analyst Ryan Hunt. And they're all sitting behind me in the first and the second row. Thank you for waving. Before we begin, I would like to sincerely thank this leadership team in my department for working diligently to thoroughly assess the needs of our department to deliver high-value services to residents and employees within the city while also being very fiscally prudent. I would like to also thank the nearly 180 employees in the Transportation Department for delivering the mobility services every day and for showing up every day with the determination to continuously improve how we serve our community. As a quick update from the last budget work plan meeting, in March, I would also like to congratulate Operator Kenneth Alexander, who represented the city at both the regional bus rodeo in March and the international bus rodeo a few weeks ago. This was the first time since the pandemic that Culver City participated in the international rodeo, and Operator Alexander put forth a strong showing. We're also grateful for Supervisor Fred Lubakava and Nestor, who attended both programs in support of Operator Alexander and to several other members of this team, who served as judges and event support for both the local and the regional bus rodeos. Next slide, please. Thank you. The Transportation Department's vision is to plan, operate, and maintain the movement of people to, through, and from Culver City through our service with our people and in our culture. Our vision includes rethinking mobility, connecting community by providing convenient, reliable connections within our 33-square-mile service area, and enhancing the quality of life with a holistic approach and with innovation and sustainability in mind to support the growth and long-term vitality of our community. Ultimately, we work to support our community in the region where the freedom to go places is supported by convenient and affordable mobility services for everyone. The department's four main functional areas include the administration, mobility planning, transit operations, and fleet and facility services. The administration also includes finance, local, regional, federal grants management, legislation monitoring, research and innovation, community engagement, and safety and training. Research and innovations are essential to everything that we do, as we always strive to bring in the leading-edge practices and technologies to improve our services and our deliverables. The Culver City bus system is the crown jewel of our department. We have seven fixed routes and one rapid transit route, and they connect Culver City to many nearby communities such as Venice, Westchester, LAX, Westwood, West LA, Playa Vista, Marina Del Rey, and Century City within our 33-square-mile service area. We updated our schedules two weeks ago as part of our May shake, and we're now at 95% of pre-pandemic service levels. Our goal is to go back to 100% service in September. And our ridership has been increasing year over year since fiscal year '21, and right now, it's currently projected to be at approximately 63% of the pre-pandemic ridership level by the end of the fiscal year, with almost 2.9 million rides projected. We augment our fixed route service with City Ride, which provides dial ride, on-demand service, and circulator services, and City Share, which has micro-mobility, employee ride share, and City's transportation demand management program. Finally, our fleet program, City Fleet Program, provides maintenance and repairs of both transit vehicles and the rolling stock across the city. We have been working on projects to improve the sustainability of our fleet by assessing the most appropriate zero-emission fleet replacement for the different vehicle types. The department also provides mobility planning and management services that goes across all of these service areas, as well as city-wide and regional mobility initiatives. We have several important and innovative projects being led through this group, including the comprehensive mobility service plan, microtransit, Move Culver City, and transportation demand management. All told, we have moved approximately 1.6 million vehicle trips from our, we removed them from our roadways, and will have a reduction of over 7 million vehicle miles traveled over the course of the year. This is an 8% year-over-year reduction of greenhouse gas emission in the city captured by using public transportation. Our department's priorities, which drive our work plan, have been long-term financial sustainability, delivering on the mobility initiatives, and employee well-being. As a note to those joining from the public, the Transportation Department does not use general funds to fund its operations or capital improvements. Our department has its own enterprise fund, and we use several different revenue streams to fund our operations and capital projects, including regional and state ballot measures, funding from Federal Transit Administration, and revenue collected from bus fares. We also actively apply for grant funding opportunities, which are generally limited to capital projects, and we have been successful in securing funding through this process. With that said, as public servants, we are implicitly aware that it's critical that we maintain a balanced budget and a healthy reserve. To do this, we have been working on a long-term financial forecasting and grant funding strategic plan with the intent to maintain a healthy financial situation to allow us to continue to deliver services to address the mobility needs of our community now and in the future. Next slide. Our request of operational enhancements align directly with our department's priorities of delivering on the mobility vision and a focus on employee well-being. To the former, our budget work plan includes several key programs intended to improve mobility services for residents, employees, and visitors alike. Our request for an enhancement for contractual services allows us to deliver on our mobility vision by partnering with service providers who can help develop and implement the deployment of mobility programs, such as the Transit Ambassador Program and Micro Transit. We rely on external consultants to both provide subject matter expertise in the development and to provide the staffing for implementation of these programs, which is ultimately more efficient and less costly than having to expand our internal staffing to fill these needs. We have also requested an ongoing enhancement to account for the increase in repairs and maintenance required to keep the transportation facility in a state of good repair. Labor and material fees have increased, and more repairs have been required in order to maintain an aging building. Our facility is critical in providing the maintenance services for all of the city's rolling stock, and having a well-functioning place to maintain our fleet is necessary to maintain satisfactory vehicle operations. Our final enhancement requests tie to our employee well-being initiatives. Our proposed budget includes enhancements to be staying current with the state of the practice through increased conference attendance and training opportunities. These are important workforce development opportunities for both managerial and frontline staff. We look to present at upcoming conferences to promote the innovative work that the department has been completing for the city and to continue to represent the city at the bus rodeo programs. Our intent for training is to expand our offerings, both in-house and externally, to secure that, to ensure that staff are both compliant for the work they do and are trained for new advancements within the industry. We also look to develop a department-wide employee recognition program to elevate staff at all levels of the department who have been going above and beyond. Because of the nature of our operations, staff are not always able to participate in broader recognition and engagement programs, so developing one that meets the needs of our frontline staff will help grow morale and improve employee retention. Reclassifying three interns to student workers will allow them to complete more substantial project work, alleviating some of the staffing constraints while also developing these newer professionals within our department. Next slide, please. Our budget enhancement request for the equipment maintenance is to increase our software licensing to include a fleet motor pool pilot, enterprise asset management expansion, and diagnostic tools for electric vehicles. Using technology to leverage our asset management and maintenance programs will enable us to drive efficiencies throughout our fleet services division. If these pilot endeavors are successful, we should be able to identify cost reductions in future budget cycles. Next slide, please. Our CIP program prioritizes both projects that are necessary to meet our current and future operational needs and projects to enable our department to advance mobility opportunities for the city over the next 10 years. We have been undertaking financial forecasting to prioritize our CIP projects, balancing the importance of maintaining long-term financial sustainability with both immediate and midterm needs to maintain and expand service levels in a safe place to work. For example, in the next year, several of our projects reflect the immediate needs of servicing our existing fleet, replacing the equipment used for fleet repair and maintenance, re-tanking our dial-arrive vehicles to be compliant with the upcoming tank expiration, and completing key safety-sensitive capital improvements to the transit facility. The Move Culver City project will connect the bike lane gap at the eastern extent of the city, meeting the needs of today's users. Other projects, such as the bus replacement and hydrogen-fuel bus pilot programs, are necessary for us to continue to serve riders in the future by providing well-functioning buses and testing new fueling for vehicles to comply with Horizon Year Regulatory Zero-Emission requirements. In order to be fiscally responsible and make progress on an ambitious but necessary CIP program, we are actively applying for grant funding to complete the majority of this work. With grant funding, we will still be responsible for local match, which is typically about 20% of the total project cost. The local match will come from disbursement from state and regional funding programs, such as Prop A and C and Measures M and R. Of the total enhancement, we anticipate less than $8 million to come from local transportation funding and approximately $16 million from grant funding. We have identified the critical timing for each project, and for grant-eligible projects, whether the project can be deferred until grant funding is secured. For many of these projects, we have already applied for grants to complete the work and defer up to, can defer up to a year in order to secure grant funding. Some projects, however, are safety-critical, in which case they will be completed without grant funding secured to be offsetting the cost. We will use local transportation revenues alone with regional and federal funds to complete these projects. We have also looked at our long-term CIP work plan to identify which projects in the future will be eligible for grant funding supports so that we can secure funds before we need to embark on these projects. And none of the capital projects in fiscal year '25 will be using the general fund as funding source. Next slide, please. In sum, we're requesting a total enhancement of $26.655 million, none of which would come from the general fund. Less than $1 million of this cost is toward our operating expenses, and the vast majority is for capital projects, with vehicle purchases being the largest proportional expense. We are actively seeking funding opportunities through regional, state, and federal competitive grants to offset these costs, and some projects will be deferred if we're not successful in securing these grants. Next slide, please. I would like to take this opportunity to also extend my thanks to our city manager, John Nakbar, for his leadership and guidance. I also want to express my gratitude to the various departments for their support over the years. Their collective effort has enabled the Transportation Department to consistently deliver services and initiatives that advance our mobility vision. And this concludes my presentation. We're available for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Do we have any comments on this presentation?
We do. We had one, two comments, but one of them has been pulled, so our last, our only comment was from Jack Galanti. You want to go on?
Hello again. I just want to thank Diana for all her work in the Transportation Department. I get, as someone on BPAC, speaking as a regular person, but I get to see all the dedication and hard work she puts into her department and getting, like, funding and expanding access to the buses for seniors, disabled, disabled individuals, and all people in the, in the city. I really support. I see the department firsthand, so I see the dedication that she goes into, and I also see the effect it has as a, on our whole community. They have the dial ride, they have the buses. I also want to heighten increasing the ecological aspects of our transportation in our city. I think we need to be moving towards a shift in using more renewable buses and energies, since that will end up costing the city less over, over time. Yeah, that's all I need to say. Thank you. The projects, one last thing, the projects that are in the budget are really crucial to our city and getting people around in a safe and effective way. Thank you.
That's the end of our speakers.
Thank you. Councilmember Vera.
Ms. Chang, thank you so much for this presentation. It takes a team to do what you've done, and we have a world-class team sitting there behind you, so thank you and your team for all your hard work. Two questions. Well, one comment. I'm glad to see that we're aggressively seeking this grant money. I think it's really important. Like you said, some of these projects might be deferred if we don't get the grants, so I know we're doing the best we can on the city level to actively secure those, so I appreciate that. Question in terms of budgeting and whatnot. I was talking to Mayor Bass about a week and a half, two weeks ago, about their coming together, so to speak, with the county in terms of the Olympics coming up, and they're already starting to plan. Have we been part of that, those conversations, and if so, is that budgeted money that we need to allocate for pre-planning, or?
Yes, we have been in communication with mostly Metro as well as L.A. 28 in regard to how we can be part of that planning process, and especially because this is a car-free event, targeted to be a car-free event, that there is a lot of demand on the supplemental bus system. So we're definitely in conversation with them, and they will be creating a regional working group for which we're going to be a part of. In terms of the funding that's in fiscal year '25 budget, there are some funding in there that's for strategic planning, as well as, you know, some of the grant funds that we have been actively pursuing. This is for the intent of being able to expand, potentially expand our bus fleet in order to support the events.
Okay, great. I'm glad to hear that. With that, I don't really have any other questions. I'm glad the support is moving forward. I know it's extremely important to have a robust transportation system, and once again, thank you and your entire staff.
Councilmember Erickson.
Thank you. Thank you, Diana, and thank you to your staff, because when COVID happened, it wasn't fun. And to navigate through that and coming out the other end and starting to grow back is a testament to the quality and commitment to you and the whole staff. We still have a bit to go, but we are getting there, I'm pretty sure. You know, that, I oversay it, and I'm going to say it again, that our bus system is the major solution for getting cars off our streets. It's mass transit. Nothing else will have an impact that matters. It will be, you know, a few percents for all the other options, but mass transit is really important, and I'm so happy to see that we are moving forward with improving our schedule and, and I'm really happy to see how well the five buses, sort of the school, if we should call them the school pickup buses, how well that has worked and how we have grown users, and hopefully those young students will then continue to realize that it is okay to take public transportation when they, you know, get up in age and have a car or not. So that program has been a great success, so thank you for keeping that alive. Really appreciate that. I have a question regarding the transportation ambassadors. Who are they? Are they full-time? Are they volunteers? I saw you wanted some more money to beef that system up. What's their function?
So the Transit Ambassador Program is a pilot program that we're implementing. We've actually secured a contract. We went out with an RP, and we actually will be taking it to the City Council in the next City Council meeting to award the contract to a contractor who will provide the staffing necessary to provide the ambassadors, that who will roam our program, the system. So that's part of the program. There's a lot of different, mainly the function is to provide information and resources to our customers and to show that sense of, that presence, so that people feel there's a sense of security, they see somebody who they may go and ask questions, or if they need help, they will be able to see the ambassador for help. In terms of the overall size of the program, we're talking about two to four people, and so it's not a big number, and it's a, and it's a pricing, it's a pricey program to have. So that's why we wanted to pilot it. We want to see how effective it can be in supporting our system as well as what our customers' feedback will be before and after the program, and we'll evaluate to see how we will continue something like this in the future post the pilot project.
Oh, yeah? Well, it's, you know, we need to try it. We need to try a lot of different things. We all read about that the Metro Board right now is very concerned about very severe violence on, on the trains, and, and they are looking at, you know, what they can do and try to coordinate with different agencies to make it more safe to ride the train. So these ambassadors, of course, are not sworn officers or anything like that, so, but still, I, I'm sure they will have a valuable effect on calming situations and making people more comfortable, so I like that idea. With regards to our buses, where are we with the renewable natural gas contract? Have we, are we sort of renewing that, or, you know, because I know we've been using renewable natural gas for quite some time, but I'm just, I haven't seen that we have gotten in front of the council some, some contract or something, so is that just ongoing?
Well, my staff behind me actually just informed me that we renewed it about a year ago.
And I didn't notice that. Okay, that was probably a consent item, yeah, right? Yeah. Okay, that's good, because I think we had someone talking about the renewable energy. Until we have hydrogen up and running, for instance, or something like that, the renewable natural gas is the best option out there currently, so that's good, that we can do that. On the hydrogen pilot, and I don't know, maybe this is too technical, are we, are we going to test buses that are hydrogen buses, meaning they, they run on hydrogen as a fuel, or are we going to test fuel cell buses, meaning using hydrogen and run them through a fuel cell to convert to electricity and actually the bus runs on electricity? Where, where's the trend going, and what are, what are we looking at?
Well, we're going to be piloting the hydrogen-fueled cell, so it's going to be using the fuel cell, and this is something that's actually recommended. We did additional analysis and assessment within the last year, where the consultant, due to the, the range limit of current technology for the battery-electric buses, they recommended that we pilot hydrogen-fueled cell buses. So, yeah, that's what we're going to be doing.
Okay. Thank you. I guess we're going to get that in front of us at some point. I guess we're going to get that in front of us at some point. But that was, that that was my my questions, and and I have, I have great support for all your asks there. We need to do this, and I think the the wellness is is really important to make our, you know, the work environment as as positive and 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 desirable as possible for all our employees. And I'm a big fan of of having continued education, going to conferences and training and so on, so I I really like that portion of your ask, so thank you for for thinking about that. And with that, I just want to say thank you to everyone.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pusa.
Thank you for the presentation. Thank you to all of your staff and for all the work you do for the city. Woo-hoo for the rodeo once again. Also, just so impressive to look over the performance metrics for the city bus and also for the city ride in in the the budget on page 427. I've asked this of other departments. I'm just curious about the the training. Would that be in-house or will be external? And do you have any more details about the training and conferences?
They would be most likely a combination of internal, external training. There's, sometimes there are certification that we need to send the staff out to get trained and certified. And but there are also, you know, for example, conferences, obviously, it's going out to the different locations where the American Public Transportation Association, the California Transit Association, Transportation Research Board, or even NACTO to just to learn. And in some cases, we actually presented at these conferences about the things that we work on. So it's a combination.
Great, thank you. And all the enhancements are very reasonable asks and all the things that we discussed during the work plan discussion, so support everything that you have here. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Diane. Great job for you and all your people in the department. Thanks to everyone in the audience. Couple quick questions. And I think it was the first slide you mentioned 1.6 million vehicle trips removed from the roadway, 7 million reduction in vehicle miles traveled. Is that based on ridership count on on the buses?
It is.
Okay. I just wanted to confirm that. And then how you you've got the, we'll be at 95%, or we are at 95% pre-pandemic, hopefully 100% in this.
In September.
September. How's our ridership compared to pre-pandemic at this point?
Our ridership is still at probably around 63% of the pre-pandemic. So but we have year over year in the last several years been consistently growing back that ridership. So it is imperative for us to return to 100% service and look at how we may be able to expand the service because us, the other transit agency in the region continue to grow their revenue miles, our formula share will get impacted by it. So that is one impact, but of course, we want to return to that 100% service and more in order to address the needs on mobility that we have been seeing.
Great. And I forgot to write down the number, but I don't know if the general public quite realizes that you don't just serve the five square miles of Culver City. What was, what's the square?
It's 33 square miles.
33 square miles, yeah. Up to UCLA and lots of directions, which is great. I was, I just want to piggyback on to what Councilmember Erickson said about safety. I appreciate the efforts on the ambassador program. I know that, I don't recall a hearing of any reported safety issues, and we want to keep that going, and the ambassador program, I think, will potentially help continue that great reputation that we have. With the new buses that's in the CIP budget, how many of those, if any, are the microtransit, like the city ride or the circulator?
For the fiscal year 25, the these buses are all 44 buses. Because we have a lot of buses that are either have reached the end of their life cycle or will reach them very soon.
Okay, got it. You mentioned, or what we talked about in the last budget cycle, a pilot plan for an on-call type of circulator or or?
The microtransit?
Yeah, the microtransit. Is is that on the horizon at all?
That is on the horizon, though the work is in progress. Turned around to look at my planning staff. So that is something that we will actually do via a contract, because it's a pilot service with no dedicated funding, that we want to try it out and see how it works. And if it becomes successful, then we will have to secure new funding source in order to pay for it. But it it will be a contract, so we don't need to expend the funding to pay for vehicles for the pilot project.
Do we track at all what, I don't know what we call it, but what the the team carts do that travel through the corridor?
Circuit, the the contractor who operates that service? Yeah, so.
Do we track their numbers at all, or do we have access to that?
We do not have access to that, but we can certainly reach out to them and and see if they would be willing to share that information with us.
Good idea, I think. And then my last question, I think I might be stealing one from the mayor. Wi-Fi on the buses, are we exploring that or having conversations at least? I know it's a budget issue, but it would be helpful for our, it probably enhance ridership.
Yeah, and that's something that definitely is on the list of things that we would like to achieve in the future. Just at this point, there are a number of large initiatives that we have to get through first, so that kind of get deprioritized a little bit. And I would like to add, my staff also informed me that we do currently have access to the circuit data, so.
Okay, great. Can we get that at a future meeting? I'd love to hear about it.
Sure.
Okay, great, thank you. That's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much. CTO, is it CTO, Chief Transportation Officer, CTO Chang, and all of your team. All 180, right, of your team? Really great how we continue to move and and get toward our sustainability goals, so very grateful for your leadership. Was really pleased to see the slide in which you shared all of the impact in terms of number of rides, folks that are riding, really grateful and excited to hear that we should be back at 100% in September, and I'm hopeful that ridership will continue to trend upwards in the direction that we've been seeing. I'm wondering, just just as a curiosity here, after reviewing, listening to your presentation and reviewing the budget document, what the strategy is around more community education as it pertains to the very many things that you're, just in terms of awareness about what's available? I know that, and I'm very grateful for leadership from your team that comes out to community events. Now I'm blinking, like Fiesta, or I'm blinking, but they are always at events, so grateful for that and their presence there. But is there other strategies around community outreach as it pertains to the wide breadth of work that you all have going on, and so that folks can really take advantage of the offerings that we have as a city?
There is. So in fact, you know, in the past several years, the department has focused a lot of energy on how do we make the community be aware of things that's happening? What are the services that may become available? So my community engagement staff, Dia Turner, has been the one who let those efforts and talking with the businesses, talking with the communities, be present, talking to schools, talking to parents. And and so we will continue that effort. But the other point that I would like to make is that in the upcoming comprehensive mobility services plan, that part of that effort is for the consultant team to actually help us build even deeper relationship with the community, with the different community groups, so that we can have the relationship, we can have the channel for us to actually inform them of the different offerings, as well as the different mobility initiatives that's intended to improve their quality of life. So there is a plan, and it will, there will be more coming in the future.
Looking forward, is that this this future, the near future or?
Yes, it is the near future. We've just, just a couple of months back, came to the council for the contract award for this, for hiring the consultant, and so so we're about to start that effort.
I'm very excited to hear, CTO, very grateful. Are we finding, thank you for that information, are we finding more success with our fare-free days? Are they still attracting folks, or is that an incentive strategy to getting folks on our system?
It is definitely, you know, when when you offer this kind of free event and you actually, it's not just offering it for free, but you actually coordinate it with the rest of the region and publicize it and entice people to try it. It does help in bringing awareness and getting people to try it that who typically don't do it. And so so that kind of events are helpful. But the key here really is that it needs to be a coordinated effort. If it's free on us and but not free toward other system, it actually create unintended negative impact to those in terms of the fare that will rely on either taking Culver City bus, and then they have to transfer to Metro, and they actually have to pay higher fares. So it needs to be a coordinated approach.
Is that something we have buy-in from our friends at Metro on to do more of those or for the coordinating? I know we just did the Bike to Work Day that honored on Culver City bus. I think LA did it on a different day, though. I think they did it on the 17th, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, sometimes the timing doesn't really jive, but for the most part, we always work with the region. And so there is regular communications that for the different agencies, including Big Blue Bus and other agencies, to see how we can coordinate this effort.
Okay, wonderful, looking forward to it. I mean, regionally is the way, so I'm glad that that y'all are already having those conversations and synergies and look forward to more, and hopefully it increases folks' ridership. I just want to say I'm very grateful that the the youth program and the coordination with our our schools has improved. I know Fox Hills was one of the ones that folks were concerned about, because it wasn't a lot of young folks initially using that program. But now, in the mornings, like, there's so many kids that are waiting for the bus, so it just is a reminder to me that these are cultural shifts that sometimes take a little bit longer to get people and parents and kids used to not doing drop-offs and utilizing the the smaller bus that's available or the buses that are available. So I'm just grateful and enthusiastic support for that program. I am disappointed that the Wi-Fi is a little bit lower priority, but at least we're still, we're still thinking about it, still in the room with us, so as long as we continue to have it in our mind, although I would love, I think that people having the option to like work while they're on the bus, or, you know, send emails or whatever, could be a really boost to having folks utilize our our space. The last thing that I'll say, well, not the last thing, second to last thing, I'll say about the ambassadors, you said two to four? They will be part-time or strategically placed at various, is it primarily the train? Or what's the strategy on the ambassador program?
So we we still have to, after the contract award, we're going to be working with the contractor to define exactly what that program is. But in general, there'll be at the minimum two people at a time, any given time within our service span, that will be going to places like Culver City Transit Center, the bus stop at the E-line station, and, you know, high hotspots where they need to head, or places where we just want to show presence. So it will get more defined in the future, but the the key is that we want to make sure that people are seeing these people.
That's important. I'm supportive of that and looking forward to that that being more fleshed out. So my question that I've been asking all of our department heads is, in light of this sort of crisis that we are in with the budget, I know that most of the, or all of your friends are not from the general fund, which is good, but how you're thinking about in the vision and and thinking about the trajectory of this department that is doing so much and employs many, many folks, and we're grateful for that. How are you thinking about this crisis and examining ways to cut back? I know that grant is a huge piece of the work that you all are doing, and very grateful, and I don't think I said that before, very grateful for your dedication to applying for grants and pursuing those, but just want to ask the same question to you around this deficit that we're facing.
Yeah, so for the transportation department, I think I mentioned earlier, in terms of capital improvements, and these, it's it's slightly easier to get by, doesn't mean that they're very easy, you know, competitive grants, especially when you talk about zero-emission mandate, that doesn't come with funding. It it really put all the transit agencies out there to try to compete with each other to get the, you know, different pots of funding that may be available. So capital-wise, I think we are relatively comfortable that we would be able to secure the funding we need. It's the operational funding that is something that needs to be resolved, and that's something that's industry-wide, especially focusing California. So we have been and will continue to work with different agencies, as well as the California Transit Association, to continue to work toward identifying new funding sources for operation, so that, you know, that same pot of funding that goes through all the different transit agencies that, you know, we're not all just fighting for this same pot where there's not, there's more demand for service but not enough funding to pay for it. So in terms of the investment overall, there needs to be new funding sources, and that's going to be the focus of my attention to try to work and to secure and advocate for more operation funding.
And just as a follow-up, do you think that it's just because of the the crisis that's happening at the state level in terms of, you know, everybody is kind of, you know, having budget issues right now in terms of the availability of funding? Is it, or is it, this is just an ongoing issue with not having the operational funding available or grants that are available?
It's not necessarily on the state level. It's a, it's a, it's a systemic issue where they're just, they're, the cost of operation continues to go up. So even if we want to stay, you know, with the same level of service, it's more expensive to operate. And so so all the transit agencies probably in in California are hurting for money.
That is very helpful. Thank you so much. Chief Transportation Officer Chang, I don't see any other comments from my colleagues, so thank you for your time in putting this together, and thank you to your team that
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council and city staff. My name is Dana Anderson, Human Resources Director, and I am pleased to review the Human Resources Department budget presentation. I want to first take this opportunity to thank Michelle Hamilton, our Senior HR Equity Manager here with me today, Risk Manager Amalia Sanchez, who's on a well-deserved vacation, our Management Analyst Tiffany Johnson, and my enti, and my entire Human Resources team. I am truly proud of the growth and progress we have made thus far in human resources, and I am truly looking forward to making great strides in serving the employees of this city. Next slide, please. The Human Resources Department strives to maintain a high-quality work environment in addition to being an employer of choice, where we can not only attract talent but maintain top talent. The HR department currently has a staff of 19, including 17 FTEs and two part-time staff to supplement both risk management and human resources. We staff and support both the Civil Service Commission and the Equity and Human Relations Committee, and also support the ad hoc Equity Subcommittee consisting of Mayor McMoran and Councilmember Pusa. and also support the ad hoc Equity Subcommittee consisting of Mayor McMoran and Councilmember Pusa. The Human Resources Department's core functions include the recruitment and selection of talent, attractive compensation and benefits designed to retain talent, provide training and development to further enhance employee knowledge and skill sets, as well as encourage succession planning. We maintain risk through occupational health and safety for employees as well as mitigate risks through the liability management and protection of our city facilities and assets. In addition to strengthening and managing employee relations with our city employees and labor partners. HR has been actively working to reach our goal of a natural five percent vacancy rate, which has been up and down due to employee turnover. And the current vacancy rate stands at nine point two percent today, attributed to employee turnover totaling a hundred and twenty employees to date due to voluntary and involuntary terminations as well as retirements. On a positive note, we have hired a hundred and forty-three employees this fiscal year to date, completed thirty-nine unboarding sessions. Our HR team has successfully completed eighty-two recruitments to date and have referred eighty-six eligible lists to departments to fill vacancies. Next year, next slide, please. This fiscal year, human resources objective is to close the loop on prior work plan projects that have been carried over from year to year. I am pleased to announce that HR has completed almost all of its objectives for FY twenty-three twenty-four, which include, um, we have improved the timeline related to pre-employment physicals from two-plus weeks to an average of five point two days from date of exam to date of decision. Transition to an online employee onboarding system, eliminating a paper process. We improved provisions within the dental plan offered to employees and also completed the first positive open enrollment for benefits, collaborating with both IT and finance to move from a paper process to an electronic enrollment process. We established a new workers' compensation program and enhanced the workers' compensation program with nurse case manager benefits to support our employees through this process. We established a new certificate of insurance system to make the insurance process more efficient to the public. We established employee recognition programs to include an employee wellness fair um and initiatives. And we implemented an employee engagement survey to better understand the needs of our employees. Um, we restructured the absence management process, which includes leaves and return to work. We also created paperless initiatives for processing to include changes in deferred compensation and creating electronic approval processes for requests from department for special compensation and other pays. We increased training initiatives with DEI training for city council and executives. We completed situational awareness training for all city employees, workers' compensation training and performance management training for supervisors and managers. And we also completed the historical context study. We are also currently nearing the completion of the class and comp study for miscellaneous employees, which we will be bringing to City Council for an update on the status. Um, we are close to the completion of updating the city's EEO plan, which has been pending for a number of years. HR's one-time budget enhancement request for three hundred and seventy-five thousand is in support of enhancing employee appreciation initiatives, citywide training and development in various areas, including compliance areas related to new legislation, for example, the Workplace Violence Prevention Plan, in addition to resources to support the implementation and engagement for that racial equity action plan, which we are currently engaged. Last year, staff completed the office reconfiguration for asked HR staff to support current, the number of current staff and also requesting to complete the remainder of the office in securing updated ergonomic furniture. And finally, the one-time includes specialized safety support and temporary staff for coverage in anticipation of a leave of absence during the next fiscal year. Next slide, please. The requested total ongoing enhancement request includes a total of seven hundred and eighteen, seven eighteen, five hundred, which includes the request of a new senior HR Management Analyst dedicated to responding to an investig- investigating employee complaints, insurance compliance and EEO reporting, the city EEO program compliance, in addition to training department liaisons. This position will support components of employee and labor relations compliance and strategies. The request also includes funding for virtual testing and one-way interview alternatives to further speed along the process for testing and evaluating candidates. We are also requesting funding for mandatory biannual sexual hara- harassment training for all employees for the twenty twenty-four calendar year, which we are preparing to launch this June for all employees. We have also incorporated the increased cost for medical exams, mandatory DLT testing, and an increase in annual insurance premiums to reflect our overall increased cost and services. The overall staffing request is a net increase of one FTE and a change from an administrative secretary position to an admin clerk position. This downgrade is to align with the current staffing in which this position is currently filled with a limited-term admin clerk employee. The Human Resources Department overall request total one million ninety-three thousand five hundred dollars in support of the requests and expenses covered in this presentation. Thank you for your time and continued support in our mission. This concludes my presentation and I am available to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any uh comments in the public?
None.
Thank you. Councilmember Dana.
Ms. Anderson, thank you and your team for um, for all you do. You know, it's um probably the most important department of uh, of the city, hiring folks to serve this great city. I know probably one of the hardest things right now outside of hiring is retention. Um, what are we doing to actively encourage or, or to incentivize the retention of our employees once they're hired?
So what we've been looking at is how to increase engagement, partially the survey that we conducted to find out um concerns with employees and what they like. Um, based on the results we have, most of our employees are um on the higher end, happy with their employment. Some of the areas revolve around, of course, compensation um benefits as there's a increased cost in benefits. So one of the things that we, we did last year or this past year, we restructured our dental benefits to provide a greater benefits to our employee. And we're in the process of reviewing a benefits consultant to further assess them for the next calendar year to see how we can improve them. Those are typically compensation, benefits as well as work-life balance are typically um the primary things as well as just happiness. I think um overall, most employees are pleased with the engagement and recognition, which um we're ramping up for and hopefully you guys will all join us June fifth here in Chamber, so.
June fifth, right. Um, and then um, I, I think outside of retention, um, and I'm glad to, you know, thanks for answering. So just in terms of retention, so you would say salary and/or benefits are probably the two key reasons why we're losing employees?
Yes, yes.
And then outside of that, what are we doing or how, how are we encouraging a robust um succession planning program?
So what I'm looking at is just overall development, um, interest from employees, things that not only they're looking forward to enhance their skills, um, that is some of the feedback as far as just identifying new training areas, um, skills that will help them grow, which will help us all. In addition to, we're looking at the class and comp studies, how we can establish more progression for employees to grow within their current position. We don't have a lot of levels, which also kind of represent the elevation in your, in growth in positions. Um, but right now I'm building out a training calendar, just different um areas of training, both compliance, but as well as interest as far as, you know, we're looking at business writing, public presentations, just things that will help employees in developing their skills so that they can continue to grow within the city. Um, I do want to state that I was pleasantly, I was pleasantly um pleased just looking at, we have a forty-year employee, we have a thirty-five-year employee, a number of thirty years, twenty-five, which we plan to recognize. Um, that's not common today in the workforce. And I think that that's great that we still have people with that level of tenure still here.
And I think also it's not common in the workforce to lose um employees that are five years or less. I mean, typically we, we, as the city used to hang on to these employees and it's sad to see that um we're, we're losing a good portion of them for the reasons you stated. And then you said it was a nine point two percent vacancy rate?
Yes.
All right, Ms. Anderson, once again, thank you so much and your entire team for, for all you do. I appreciate your work.
Thank you. With regards to retention and attracting employees and so on, it's, it's not just about the pay scale, scale and, and the benefits and so on, we all know that. I know there are at least one, probably looks like two cities down in Orange County that basically gonna run out of cash here within the next eighteen months. And uh I heard from some people that uh they can't fill their vacancies because, uh, you know, no one wants to start working in a city that has such a problematic financial situation. So I'm just wondering if we add all the other aspect of, of Culver City, in your opinion, how do we compete in, in general? So I, you know, it has to do with all these other aspects. How do we compete with, with the cities in LA County, for instance? Because I, I guess we recruit within LA County, but we also recruit from Northern California and everywhere, so.
I think that we compete based on our brand and, and the, the city in which we represent. Um, we look at different things such as, you know, work-life balance, hybrid work, which, you know, we try to accommodate while running a city, but to give people that component where we can to be more competitive. Um, I agree. I mean, I do have colleagues in other areas where it's challenged, just, it's challenging, not just from a people perspective, but also a budget perspective as well. I think for us, we, you know, with the exception of, you know, some of our trades, some of our difficult-to-fill positions, we have been fortunate to get a great number of candidates. And I think that just Culver City, the reputation itself. Um, you know, this past year I did two higher-level positions for two of our executives. Um, and I was just surprised at the number of candidates that we got wanting to come here. So I think just all of the wonderful things that council, our city manager leadership does speaks for itself. And that's just for our city. Um, but just, we're constantly looking at how we could be more efficient. We're looking at how we can do better at our recruitment processes because that's one thing too that can sway someone from applying, taking too long, you know, not being responsive. So just trying to provide that level of customer service, you know, to our candidate clients.
Well, I, I agree that, you know, speed is usually very important because they might be looking at several opportunities and whoever are fast, fast and, and, and offering a position might be the one that they uh go to. So yeah, so that's, and I, I heard in your presentation that you had shortened that time, which is really appreciative that, that, that has happened. And then if, I trust that you communicate with the city manager if there are issues that, and I'm not talking about the salary benefits and, but anything else because we, as the council, we can affect a lot of things, right? If there are issues that you start to see that becomes a hurdle for people to come to Culver City, that you would communicate that to city manager and to us if there is within our purview to, to maybe improve or fix because uh it is a whole package uh that we are selling, so. Yeah, the vacancy rates, I know different department has, has, has different vacancy rates. And uh, for instance, I know the transportation department has been suffering quite a lot for, for, for a while and uh. So um, what is your target? So we are at nine point two now. If you would sort of guess, uh, what, where would we be a year from now? What is your target? Where, where do you want us to go? I, I know zero is not realistic, right? So we can take that off the table, but where do you want us to be?
So ultimately, our goal is five percent. If I had to project, just considering some of the known retirements, which you've heard yesterday, which we're working on, you know, planning for those. I would, you know, my goal would to probably get around seven percent, if not less, um, just in anticipation of some of the known retirements that um I'm aware of, just in planning and trying to be proactive in filling those. Um, and yes, I, you know, regularly do talk to the city manager about that and planning. As well as our executive team, um, I've been working on educating them on their vacancies, where they are, what for referral list they are, trying to help um in doing that. I think that I've seen a lot of improvement. We did drop down to seven, we're back up just because of um, you know, resignations, retirements. So if I had to say a year from now today, I would hope to at least strive to be at about seven percent, if not better.
That would be great. Uh, you know, I, it, it takes time. So that you have that goal is, is, it makes me happy. Uh, because that means that, you know, you want to move us in, 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 in a very positive direction. So uh, thank you for, for sharing that with us. And I, I don't have any, any other um add-ons. What you do is very important for all the departments to staff up. So uh, your enhancement make a lot of sense for retention and for, for filling vacancies. So I don't have an issue with that. Thank you.
Listening to the conversation, there's one thing I'd like to add that's a challenge for us that I don't know how we overcome. That is that most of our employees face a significant commute and it's unavoidable. There, there aren't many employees that can afford to live near here. And so that, that's, that's a, that's a factor and people, oftentimes we have very good employees that find a, a, a job that's much closer to their home. Forty, fifty-minute commutes are kind of wearing on folks. But I just wanted to point out that that's something I don't think we have any control over.
No, and, and you're right. And for, you know, for a lot of people, that, that becomes an issue, definitely. Uh, and yeah, I don't know what a council can do. We live in sort of the West LA market and uh, we are just a little speck in the whole from LA County West Side. And we're just floating with whatever, you know, happens in, in real estate here, so. So it's, it's sort of, it's a regional issue and it has to be dealt with on a regional basis. But I, I can definitely see that that's a problem.
Councilmember Pusa.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, thanks for the presentation and for your service to the city. Um, people are essential to any organization, as you know. Um, when you invest in people, you get more productivity, more efficiency, better work attitudes. Um, and you're so close to that, to that goal. So kudos for all the work that you've been doing, hiring. And your requests hit about five out of the seven of your work plan priorities, so that's great. Um, just two quick questions for the um DEI trainings. Um, will those be progressive or will those be kind of the same every year? Because, you know, for electeds, it will turn over, you know, every so often or?
So progressive. So I have been looking at different areas of DEI. It's not just one, well, one I'm looking for to exp- It's not just one, well, one I'm looking for to expand citywide, our staff, but just different areas because there are just different components of DEI, which as part of the Equity Subcommittee, I will share some of those curriculum with you and the rest of council as far as our plan. But we are looking to diversify as that was, you know, one of the pleasant requests that I received was to grow in this area, to get more training and education on this area. So, yeah, I'm not looking for just a singular facet, but how do we expand and continue growth and learning in this area?
Thank you. And then generally, obviously, things change. But do you have a general timeline for the racial equity actual action plan?
Completion? Well, the consultant is fast-tracking. I mean, we're right now in data collection. I think we're just about finished in giving that information for review of policy practices and things that are going on. Next steps, I believe we will be starting to work towards community engagement and input. And I think I did, I think I did share, if not share, kind of what that notice to the public looks like as far as just collecting input on just different areas on how we can affect policy. Timeline, I think we are slated to, the overall project was estimated eight to nine months. We just kicked off, I'm going to say in February. So I'll say, with holidays and stuff, I would probably estimate maybe January, February, if not sooner. But I thus far am very pleased with the consultant. They've been really, really fast and responsive and proactive in this effort.
Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks, Dana, so much. I have to, you know, underscore what an incredible job you did getting us, you know, as close to normal as possible after COVID. Huge task. I'm looking at the, your performance metric and it's reflected there. And then it's very interesting how there's a level of consistency as well in, from year to year and projecting forward. Just a couple of quick questions. When people do leave, do you conduct exit interviews then?
We just rolled that out. There was a paper exit survey, but we have just implemented within the past month a total new process on, offboarding process to collect survey, to collect feedback. And we have received a couple of entries from that. And we do look at that to see how we can learn and improve and maybe implement new things. But yes, we do have an exit survey.
Yeah, I figured that would be a little more honest assessment than while you're still employed. And then housing costs, my wife's a teacher in Culver City. She loses colleagues every year to distance. They find a job closer to where they live and it makes a lot more sense. And then I think it was in the last, last year's budget cycle, we talked about comparative salary study per position to our neighbors. Is that ongoing or?
So the city council update on the class and comp study, we will be bringing that to you. So the consultant is working on finalizing. We just, just today had a steering committee meeting for our labor groups, our labor, miscellaneous labor partners to review the draft class specs. We will be bringing the compensation components to city council for review and direction, I would say, within the next month or two.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Mayor.
Thank you, Director Anderson, your team, for all the work that you all have provided for the city. Very grateful for that and grateful for the presentation. It was really helpful to see all the roles that have come online and some of your goals and projections for moving forward. So really grateful for everything that you all are doing to support all the departments in the city. My, some of my questions colleagues have already gotten to, so I will skip over those. I continue to ask about 360 evaluations. Is that something that is being incorporated or is still sort of in the mix that folks are thinking about?
So we have started assessing that and working with our executive teams to look at feasibility, the efficiencies of them, the benefits, the pros and cons. It is an active discussion. We have started looking at just different options and if that's something that we can, or if not, some sort of modification. This year, we did already update both the Police Department and Fire Department evaluation processes. There, it's not 360, but I have brought this mention, as it has came up, to our executive team. And it is something that we have been engaged in talking to and reviewing. So as we finalize that discussion, I will update you on where we are.
And the only reason I continue to bring it up is because while I think that evaluation from our supervisors is helpful, I also think it's really critical to get feedback from those who are being supervised as well. And we don't always hear, hear from those folks in the evaluation processes. So just, I know it's sometimes different platforms or different systems, but it could be just a different lens to continue to move forward and meet the goals that our departments are setting. So I appreciate you and the entire team, executive team, for looking into that. And I'm glad to hear about the assessments at FIRE MPV. I am looking forward to the re, particularly the community engagement. So we'll just be on the lookout as that process continues to go. But I just wanted to make sure to have that on the record. And I think prior I had asked about, like, employee resource groups. And I think you had mentioned not being open to those, or I can't remember. Maybe, let me just ask again, in terms of like affinity groups or groups for, because going back to why people stay, why they don't, a lot of times it's the culture of the space. And I know in other spaces where I'm at, both in my deja and other areas, other boards and things that I sit on at the county, the county has a lot of like affinity groups, LGBTQIA groups, you know, ethnicity groups, sometimes religion groups, depending on the group. Is that something that we're exploring to foster more community and belonging at the city?
So we are assessing one in which I'm working with our city attorney office to review. With respect to affinity groups, I am familiar with them. I mean, I was actually part of some in my former. I'll take a look at that. Usually affinity groups are not necessarily HR-led. You know, I was a big proponent of our Black Employees Association. I had staff Latino Employees Association. We had LBGTQs, but those were typically employee-led. HR usually didn't intervene. I mean, of course, we would support initiatives, but that's something that I can look at here. I'm not sure of the history of affinity groups, but I can look at that.
Okay, great. And if I didn't ask, and prior I apologize, I thought that I did. So thank you for looking into it. Do we know sort of on average what the cost is of bringing on someone new on average?
So it varies based on a level. Average, I would probably say what I've seen. It is for your lower-level staff, I would say total comp maybe about $100,000. For your higher levels, about $180,000.
For one role, right?
Yes. And that's total salary plus benefits pension. And that's my estimate, not finances.
Okay, yeah, for sure. This is totally, I'm not going to quiz you, not going to hold you to it. I just was curious. And in terms of the trends regarding retention and potential turnover, are we like monitoring, you know, for groups in this, you know, age bracket? Or, you know, just sort of monitoring the trends of when folks are joining, when they're leaving? And I know that I'm grateful to hear that there's a new system for offboarding. So looking forward to the data from that and the information from that. But I just want to make sure that we're keeping an eye, like, particular departments or, you know, just age group trends. Because I think a lot of it could be a generational thing because a lot of folks, a lot of millennials don't stay at roles particularly long. And it's not, you know, it's not a big thing for us. But for other generations, folks go and stay somewhere for a really long time. So it might be just that coming up. So I'm just, you know, just offering it as something to monitor and see if we're finding any trends on that, the city level.
Yes, I do look at that. I know we're working on just our updated demographics. And I may have shared with council last year, I was a little concerned when I did our demographics for 2022 to learn that our average employee age was 45.2. That is concerning because it's near retirement age. So I do look at just different generation because our different Gen X, Gen Y, millennials, they think different and they want different. It's no longer stagnant where it's a constant rotation. I think the average is every three to four years, they're jumping. So those are things I do read about and try to learn to see what keeps them. A lot of it I learned is challenging, you know. I think my staff, some staff here, I have a cross-generation, but I've had all millennial staffs. And a lot of it is the engagement in their work and being fulfilled in what they do. So looking at how we can implement that in the city, I think, would be helpful. But I do look at those trends. I do look at compensation, where we place people just to see. I mean, we want to be competitive, but one of the things that I often look at when we place people on the higher end to be competitive, how long will they stay if there's no growth? So those are things that I do look at and kind of assess to see how we can improve.
Okay, fair enough. Thank you for that. Appreciate your lens on that. Last, second to last, just want to put a plug for monitoring sort of our care infrastructure or how childcare and/or caring for older adults is impacting our workforce. I think that that's, we overlook care infrastructure a lot. People call it different things, but I call it care infrastructure, thinking about folks' ability to go and show up to a job. Although I'm happy to hear that a lot of roles can still be hybrid, which I think would be great for the care infrastructure piece. But just seeing how, how much bearing those obligations that so many have to care for their families is showing up in our workforce. And so just put a pin in that, looking forward to learning more. And of course, I've been asking everybody about areas in light of the deficit and the crisis that we're facing, thinking about the vision of getting us to five, to 7%. The goal really being five, but reasonably 7%. How, you know, we might minimize some of, you know, knowing the cost of getting someone new, knowing we want to reduce and make sure that folks are, reduce turnover and make sure that folks are staying. So just curious your thoughts on, on those expenses coming from the team.
So internally for me, I'll say with my department, one of the things I did for our all-hand is looking at how to be cross-functional. I am very sensitive to employee costs in addition to staffing, especially when you have projected deficits because, of course, you don't ever want to get into a position where you have to reduce staffing. So for me, what I did was just took a step back and just kind of look at where we are, what are we trying to accomplish this year? And how we could be a little bit more effective and just kind of developed cross-functional training and development, where I have staff learning different areas so that, one, it's development, but it's also succession planning. Because oftentimes, I see we have one person who's a single point of failure. They leave the organization and then you're lost. So for me, I'm a big proponent of just internally not necessarily asking for more staff. One, you know, we have to sit them somewhere, but we have to also be mindful of the cost. So I'm sensitive to that in trying to identify creative ways to maintain my operation, maintain my staff's work-life balance, while also accomplishing, serving, you know, our city.
Thank you. And just a plug for mental health supports also. I meant to mention that with the care infrastructure. So thank you for that. Not seeing any other comments from colleagues. Thank you so much for the presentation and your work.
Thank you.
Next up, we have finance. Ready?
May I real quick? Would it be better if I just leave now, a couple minutes early, so I don't leave right in the middle of her presentation, just for keeping sakes?
And because it's 4:27.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Let the record reflect.
You heard enough of me yesterday.
At 4:27.
Thank you so much.
Let's do this again.
Okay, good afternoon again, Honorable Mayor McMoran, Vice Mayor O'Brien, and Council Lisa Soger, Chief Financial Officer. And I am back today to present the proposed budget enhancements for the Finance Department. And I promise today I will be very brief, as opposed to yesterday when I talked your ears off.
Good information. Sorry.
Glad to hear it. And again, I really want to thank my entire team in the Finance Department. We have a staff currently of 36 for their continuing dedication to serving Culver City residents, businesses, and city staff. Next slide, please. Finance is putting forward several one-time enhancements for fiscal year '24, '25. The first is temporary staffing for the payroll team. As Michelle, our Chief Information Officer, mentioned yesterday in her presentation, the city is seeking to transition to a new timekeeping system in the new fiscal year. The additional support in payroll will enable the integration process to move forward more smoothly while maintaining daily operations. The next enhancement is consultant support to assist the department in updating both the purchasing ordinance and the environmental purchasing policy. The environmental purchasing policy is a result of SB 1383 and requires the city to procure certain kinds of goods and also require that of our consultants. And we want to really update that and make sure we're able to track it properly. And outside help will be instrumental in doing that. In addition, in April, the Federal Office of Management and Budget announced significant changes to the Guidance for Federal Financial Assistance, which was formerly called the Uniform Guidance. A consultant will assist our staff in determining the best practices to update our policy to be in compliance. And finally, finance staff in consultation with the IT department has reviewed areas within the first floor where, that we occupy to increase safety of those offices. So this funding request would install cameras and upgrade the vault security here on the first floor. So one-time enhancement requests total $232,900. Next slide, please. Ongoing enhancement requests include a new full-time payroll manager with Mary Knoller's pend... pending departure and the loss of her institutional knowledge, the planned update to the city's timekeeping system, and changing labor laws. It is prudent to seek someone with a deep background and experience to lead the payroll division. Next, in the current year, the city has utilized an outside consultant to perform the annual warehouse inventory count as opposed to performing it in-house. The count went much more smoothly and conformed to best practices by having a third party do the evaluation. The department would like to make this an ongoing practice. Similarly, Finance used outside design services in the current year to produce the popular annual financial report and an upcoming budget in brief document to provide more public-friendly financial documents. Staff recommends making this an ongoing enhancement. One enhancement that is not on this slide but was included with the IT Department presentation yesterday is the ongoing maintenance cost for the ClearGov software, which builds the new CIP budget book and will be used next year to develop the operating budget book. Finally, when Finance and the city manager had recommended adding a warehouse supervisor position to central stores in anticipation of transportation returning to 100% service levels in the upcoming fiscal year, this position would have been jointly funded by the General Fund and the Municipal Bus Lines Fund. After conversations with our Chief Transportation Officer about transportation priorities and budget constraints, this position will now not move forward and instead will be put on a pause. So ongoing enhancement requests total $222,700. Next slide, please. This slide shows Finance staff as they are spread across the various divisions. The addition of one full-time equivalent in administration reflects the shift of the internal audit function back to the Finance Department from the city manager's office after the departure of Onyx Jones. The one full-time equivalent in budget and financial operations reflect the added payroll manager position. We are recommending eliminating one vacant frozen senior account clerk position in Treasury to keep overall staffing numbers down. And as I mentioned previously, we are now proposing to remove the recommended warehouse supervisor position that was included in the draft budget that would have been seen in the purchasing division line. Next slide, please. Our total general fund requests are $455,000 and $600. And next slide. And that completes my presentation today, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any comments? Charlie, thank you, City Clerk. Councilmember Erickson.
Yeah, thank you. I don't really have any, anything to add. I think it's, you know, keeping payroll organized and running is really important because if you, if that gets out of hand, it can become disastrous on multiple level, both for employees but also upward for reporting and so on. So.
I would say that payroll is probably the most important thing for retention, that if we don't make payroll every two weeks, then we have a real problem.
Yep, exactly. So, but thank you for putting this budget together with all the departments and the city manager and so on. And I have no other additions or deductions. So thank you.
Councilmember Fuzza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you again. And just thank you again for the increased transparency, the increased translation. The town hall was amazing. And even this budget, I know that you, you know, put all the CIPs in one space or one location. I know that was helpful. I know, I'm sure it's just challenging to do the whole document itself and then to translate it is an extra step. So I appreciate it all and I hope it continues, but I know it's a work in progress. All the asks are very reasonable. I actually just have two questions about the work plan that I may, that may have been answered, but I just wanted to get some clarification. Where are we with the user fees and development impact fees? The update on those?
That is ongoing. We've, most, most departments are completed. We've had a couple that have been more challenging. Our goal is to bring that to you in the beginning of next fiscal year. So based on the council's schedule, it probably will come in August.
Is that what we talked about when we were going to update the refuse penalty fee?
Oh, the refuse?
Yeah.
Yeah. So refuse is doing an, so that is their, those are their rates. They are doing an independent study to review cost of operations to help set the rates. So that will come back to you separately. The user fee study addresses a variety of citywide charges that have to do with building, safety, planning, PD, fire, all, it's a, it is a comprehensive list.
Got it, got it.
So it's a heavy lift and we've had change in departments too. So we revisit it a few times.
Thank you. And then there's one about the review of the revenue streams and financial forecasts. Is that a review or is that kind of like?
I mean, that is something we do ongoing.
Yeah.
I think we're constantly, we're constantly looking at how the revenue streams are performing. I think I mentioned yesterday that with the help of our consultant, we're getting better discovery and compliance of businesses that had not been registered for business tax certificates and now, and now are compliant and paying the taxes. There are other things that we can do in terms of auditing the remittances that we get. That has been sort of handled at a very low level and it's something that we can look at. Now that we've gotten these other things in place, we, now that she's here, we'll, we have a little bit more depth into doing some analysis of those revenue streams.
Oh, great. Great. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor. Not much to add. Thanks so much. I have to personally thank you for taking the time last week to walk through the budget with me. It just helps understand everything. It's for the public. Here it is. It's very thick. And the Budget 101, I think that that was a great program and I appreciate the web portal that's going to be coming up as well. All those things make it easier for people to understand. The only, the only thing I struggle with now, kind of following along between what we're seeing up here with the enhancements, is tracking that to what I'm seeing in our book here. I'm having a hard time correlating those numbers to what I'm seeing in here. I don't know if there's a way to maybe highlight numbers in the columns that add up to what I see there. That, for me, that would be helpful. I don't know if that's a huge lift or if that's a small lift, but if it's, you know, I know you're constrained on resources, so, but that would be just, in connecting the dots, it would be helpful.
Yeah, I think, I mean, we can, we can think about how we might show that certainly in the enhancement document that's at the end of the budget message, right, lists all the things that are being recommended and the account codes.
That would, yeah.
And that's in there.
Okay.
But, so it does list the account codes that they align to. It's sort of the red and dark blue pages.
Okay.
And then, once the, those budget enhancements are recommended by the city manager, they get pulled and included in the operating budget pages. So if, for example, you know, in the Finance Department, if we included that payroll manager was included as an enhancement, those, that budget enhancement would show in that salary line for the Budget and Financial Operations Division. So it's already showing in the total, those budget pages. And I can think about how maybe there's a way to highlight, maybe there's a way to, for us to highlight accounts that have been changed with enhancements. That might help you so if they were, you know, maybe we could highlight them a color or something and you, and you would know that that would tie back to an enhancement. We can think about that for the next iteration.
I appreciate it. And obviously, it's like with technology. Sometimes it's the technology, sometimes it's the operator error.
Yeah.
So I'm the operator here.
Yeah.
I might not be seeing the roadmap that's already in there.
And we're going to see, so it's going to change a little bit too. We've been preparing our budget one way for a long time and now we have the opportunity with the program, the software program that, that we've been doing, the CIP budgeting in, is also able to pull our data and create a budget book. We did not have enough time this year to really launch that in addition to the CIP, but next year our goal is to make use of that feature as well. And we may be able to get, sort of, show these things differently because we will have a different platform to use.
Thank you very much.
Sure.
Honestly.
Of course.
Appreciate it, Lisa. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you so much. CFO Soger, really appreciate you and your team. Glad that you have a new team member. Welcome. We're glad that you're here. I am not going to ask you the question about the deficit because your whole thing is dealing with what's going on.
I had an answer too.
Oh, well, go ahead. If you had something prepared, I'm not going to take it.
I mean, I don't know that it's perfect, but I mean, it is something that I think about all the time.
Yeah, yeah.
And, and so when I put forward enhancements for my department or ask for new positions, I do it very, it is, it's a struggle for myself because I know that I'm asking departments to be judicious and make sure they really need something and look at other ways to fund things. And so it is something that I think about all the time. But, but similarly to the city attorney and our chief information officer, we're a department that serves all these other departments. And as they grow and their needs grow and our revenue streams grow, and as council has asked them to search out more grants, that means more mandated reporting and oversight and all the things that then fall upon my team. So it is a balancing act. So I don't know that I have the perfect answer, but I do think about it every day. I do think about how we can be efficient with some of our new systems and make better use of the software and financial systems that we have to free up staff to do other things. So it, it's a daily enterprise for me to kind of think about how we manage and make sure that we're being the most efficient and responsible for our finances.
I appreciate that. And just your overall, this is an aside, but your overall enthusiasm for budgets and revenue streams is really, I'm really grateful that you're able, you know, because I don't know if everyone has the passion here and you have it. So we're grateful. I don't have much because again, I appreciate just increased public participation. I think the workshop was a great success. I hope we have better weather next year to, to hopefully really pack the room out because I know that folks are eager to be involved and understand what's happening. So very grateful for your leadership and look forward to, to bigger and better. Was very pleased to see the revenue stream expiration. Of course, the forecasts are already, can keep us posted in the mid-year and just overall on that. But really want to, look forward to learning more about, you know, what is possible. I know I'm grateful in the opening, I'm not sure I said this yesterday, that BL is going so well and it's sort of supporting us. I know we're not in a wonderful place, but we are in a much better place because we have that additional revenue. So I'm grateful to hear. So looking forward to hearing the additional ideas that come from your team in that analysis there. And just the last piece, I'm very excited about the, the technology, about potentially presenting things differently. It's not always, it's like almost a little science about like how our brain, you know, all the different kind of learners and visual and audio and all those things. So just, just keep it up. I'm excited to hear how next, next years might look. And just, you all produce a book every year. Like this is a textbook for the city of Culver City every year. So we're very grateful. I really appreciate just, just increased transparency and just keep up, keep up the good work. Thank you so much.
We will.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council Members, Jesse Mays, Assistant City Manager, and I am pleased to present the City Managers Department proposed budget for the fiscal year 2425. I'd like to introduce you to the rest of the city managers' office, most of whom are with us here today in the chambers. City Manager John Nochbar, Assistant City Manager Mike Bruckner, Assistant to the City Manager Shelley Wolfberg, Assistant to the City Manager on Homelessness, Aramis White Sheeran, City Clerk Jeremy Bocino, Economic Development Director Elaine Warner, Cultural Affairs Manager Sally Unsworth, and our Communications Manager Dustin Kleeman. I'd also like to thank our other department staff, our Administrative Assistant Terrica Miller, Sam Lee and Lee Lawler in Cultural Affairs, Edgar Varela, Elizabeth Garcia, Luis Gonzalez, and Michelle Vianco in Economic Development, and our City Clerk staff, Tiana Allen, Mimi Farrell, and Stephanie Smith. Next slide. The City Managers Office works with all city departments to implement the city council's goals and objectives. For that reason, we coordinate the city's interdepartmental response to homelessness, working closely with the Housing and Human Services Department. We communicate with the public to ensure transparency about what's going on in all city departments. We are also responsible for outreach with external groups and agencies, including advocacy on state and federal matters. Last but certainly not least, we oversee the City Clerk's office, economic and cultural development. Next slide. In the proposed budget, we are requesting three one-time budget enhancements, which will have a net impact of $250,000 on the General Fund. That includes funding for this fall's election, funding for tourism promotion, including a new tourism webpage, and the continuation for an additional year of our current limited-term management analyst in cultural affairs. Next slide. In addition, we're requesting four ongoing budget enhancements totaling $84,000, which are predominantly economic development related. They include an Olympic Day annual event, an annual jazz festival, activation at the Culver Steps, and a downtown craft fair. Next slide. In the proposed CIP budget, the City Managers Office is requesting approximately $2.4 million in enhancements. These include funding for art related to the 2028 Olympics, new artwork for the Farragut Connector, and replacement artwork outside the police station, and an increase in funding for the Artist Laureate Program. Next slide. One of the highlights of the request is $500,000 from the Cultural Trust Fund for the artwork by Charles Gaines entitled "Frame for a Tree," shown here, which will be installed at the corner of Washington in the natural, National. Our, our request includes funding for numerous projects such as this one that will beautify our public spaces. There's funding for, there's funding proposed for landscaping improvements under the 405 freeway and also in the Arts District median's lighting and other improvement in the Arts District and Media Park. And finally, there's funding for an elevator modernization project at three of our parking structures. Our department's proposed budget includes a net reduction of one FTE due to the transfer of one senior management analyst from the Audit Division to Finance Administration. The two positions that were added to our department in the current fiscal year are proposed to continue in next year's budget. These include the new communications and public information manager position and the limited-term management analyst in cultural affairs. In summary, our total enhancement requests include a general fund request of just over $1 million and a non-general fund total request of about $1.7 million to help further the city council's strategic goals of. to help further the city council's strategic goals of providing high-quality public services, increasing community engagement, improving and maintaining public infrastructure and community spaces, and promoting diversity, equity, and inclusion. That concludes our report, and we are all available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments from the public? City Clerk?
Yes, we had two people sign up, Jack Galanti and Jim Clark. Not seeing Jack Galanti either online or in person. So Jim Clark would be our speaker.
Good afternoon, Jim Clark, Chair of the Culver City Arts Foundation. Just wanted to make five brief points regarding the cultural affairs budget within the City Managers Office. First, I wanted to welcome Sally. Glad to have you onboard and had the opportunity to meet with her. First, we're very supportive of the continuation of the three FTEs in cultural affairs. But I will say that those staff people are really pressed to do a lot. There's a lot on their plate to do. We hope that they can be innovative in their approach. And we on the cultural, with the Culver City Arts Foundation, want to lend a helping hand in any way that we can to help them in carrying out their duties. That's the first thing I wanted to say. Second, we're very appreciative of the projects that you've listed in the CIP, the arts projects that are there, and we're very supportive of those and, again, would like to work with you. Third, tomorrow night, we'll be doing the first stakeholder meeting on the Olympics, and very excited about that. I hope at some point in the near future that the city will consider having, designating a full-time employee as the sort of Olympic czar for the city, whether that be somebody who's part of the existing staff or that you go out and hire someone new to do that. But I think for the kinds of projects that are going to come about out of this stakeholders' meeting, I think it'll be important to have somebody who's coordinating that on a full-time basis. Fourth, I know that you're in the process of reviewing the procedures for the distribution of the cultural trust funds. One aspect of it is that a developer could use the money from that for building a facility for the arts. The problem is that there's not enough funds from any one developer to be able to really develop a useful arts facility. But I would like to see the city and the city council consider the idea of expanding that provision to allow for the pooling of funds so that multiple developers could, in fact, pool money into something so that we'd have some significant funds to be able to really do a municipal, either performing arts center or municipal art gallery or some type like that. And the fourth thing is that the Culver City Arts Foundation is very interested in serving in a capacity as a fiscal intermediary for the city. We think that some of the major arts capital projects, such as a municipal art gallery or performing arts center, are going to necessitate receiving private funding. And we would be happy to serve in a capacity of working with the city to go out and help recruit and develop the funding for that so that, we're talking about, you know, major significance amount of money that the city itself can't go out necessarily solicit for. But if we could work as your agent, we'd be happy to do that in trying to reach those goals. So those are the five things that I wanted to comment on. Thank you for your time.
Honorable Mayor, if I may ask a question?
Sure.
So Jim, when you mentioned the pooling, are you talking about the developers, the 1% fee that we have on development?
Right. One aspect is that the developer itself could build their own facility, you know, use the money to build a cultural facility on site. But there's really not enough funds from any one development to really do that. But if we could create a pool where the money from that could go into a pool that could be used for the development of that, I think that would be helpful.
So then I'm going to direct the questions to the manager. Don't we have sort of like an in lieu that if a development project don't do anything that we consider being art worthy, then it goes into a fund?
That's the cultural trust fund.
That we then control. So in a way, that's a pooling, right?
Correct.
And that can be used for infrastructure related to art.
But it has to be for public art.
Okay.
Not any cultural purpose. It's got to be public art.
Public art. Okay. Thank you.
All right. We don't have any further comments, correct? It looks like we might have one more.
We do. We have Denise Neal. I'd like to speak on the City Managers Office presentation. Correct?
Thank you.
Good evening, well, afternoon, Honorable Mayor, City Council, and community at large. I'm Denise Neal. Regarding the City Managers Budget and what Jim Clark just mentioned, I'd like to know if we're still willing to work with Manchester Bidwell, who has the full capacity to help us build out everything we're seeking, sorry, seeking to build out, including an arts and culture, cultural center. And the strategic plan that Joanna Papata has laid out is, has a two-year turnaround. She's a strategist that wants to get the community and all the power players on Zoom to be able to do this. And this would be a perfect time because we're talking budget and planning for the Olympics. And there are so many elements and moving parts that I already have notes on, and we've been working on for a few years now. So I'm hoping that we can have a chance to talk about the possibilities of this actually happening. And as far as funding, I'm wondering how much the California Endowment would be able to help with. I think they're private, and I'm wondering if we can do some public-private partnerships on a lot of these things we're trying to achieve. Thank you. That's about it.
Thank you, City Clerk. Councilmember Erickson.
Well, it looks like an exciting year with all these activities, which I think will have different sort of economic development targets. So that makes sense. I have a question. I saw that there was a proposal here for ice rink, holiday ice rink, for $100,000 that was taken out of the budget. My understanding is, after checking with LA and Santa Monica, is that the ice rinks that they have actually makes money. They don't, they actually, it's a profit. So I'm just wondering why there was a cost of $100,000? Because, yeah, those two cities makes money on those ice rinks during December.
Yes. Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor, members of the City Council. So the ice rink fabricators or the vendors that produce these ice rinks are the same that use LA Live and Santa Monica. And unfortunately, they apparently did an ice rink in Culver City about 15 years ago that did not make any money. So when we reached out to them, the $100,000 estimate was upfront revenue-sharing projection, wherein actually it would be closer to $200,000, $300,000. They wanted us to put up all the money first, and then if there was revenue, they would share it on the backend.
Okay, I got it. Thank you.
I didn't recommend that one.
Sorry?
And I didn't recommend that one.
No, I know. I know. Makes sense. Yeah. Maybe the DBA has some ideas. I don't know. Looks good. And I think that the additions of staff that we did last year really has turned out great. So I'm very positive that those are being kept now and made permanent. So I have no further comments. I think we have a really great combination of individuals and staff position to represent the city and the council very well. Thank you.
Councilmember Puzza.
Thank you, Mayor. Thanks for the presentation. Thanks for everything that the City Manager and the office does. I, too, would love to see the ice rink, not this year, but in some year. I think it's just a wonderful idea. It'd be so fun, but down the road at some point. Very excited for the stakeholders' meetings, very excited for the Olympics. Hope that Culver City, well, I know Culver City will be the epicenter of the arts, where the athletes will be seen at UCLA and the Athletes Village. But I hope that artists will stay in Culver City and the Artist Village. The, I just have mostly clarifying questions. Most of these are straight to the point. And so excited just that there's so many cultural events coming back to Culver City. So I'll always cheerlead for those. But the underpass landscaping, most, that's concrete. So what kind of landscaping is going to be done there?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Aramis White Sheeran. I'm the Assistant to the City Manager. The underpass, we are looking to renovate and empower those spaces. So currently, right now, there's fencing up since the encampment was removed from the 405 in Venice. We talked to Caltrans, and they gave us some ideas as to how they redesigned those areas to activate those spaces. So we've been talking with our PRCS department. So the one for 405 in Venice, it will turn into a food truck in a small eating area and along with storage for public works and parks. We do need some more storage, and we're also going to have our artists come in and do some great artwork under there and change out some lighting to really make this space a usable space for that community, especially in that area. The eating area will also allow dogs in that area, so it'll be dog-friendly. And it'll be gates up so folks, if they have small children and dogs, won't run into the street. And the same will go for the Culver and the 405. We're also going to create a space where it's more user-friendly and activates that space as more so as a recreation space.
Thank you. Appreciate it. And then I have a question about the visit Culver City website and tourism assets. I just, I'm excited about the potential of this. Is it just getting the website getting started right now? We're just obviously at the beginning stages of this, but can we just get, or can you give me a breakdown of where we're at right now and what is the expectation for this, to, how's it expected to grow?
Sure. So we've had some of our, one of our cluster meetings that we had this year was with our hospitality team. This is a recurring theme that we've heard in our Economic Vitality Task Force as well. So our status at this moment is working with information technology to do what they would call a sub-site to our current Culver City website. And we'd be using our existing vendor, Granicus, to be able to create that site. And we're also looking at doing, some of the funding that we've asked for is to actually do brand management, to go back out with our hospitality group and to understand how do we sell that brand that they're selling for us currently. And then that will inform sort of the design and possibly the layout for the website. So our goal this year is really just to get the website up to be able to promote all of our assets.
Great. It's helpful. Thank you. Those are all my questions. Thank you, Mayor.
Vice Mayor O'Brien.
Not much to add, just a big thank you to everyone on down the line, Shelley and Jesse and Aramis. Incredible work over the past year, Elaine, and welcome to Mike and Sally. Excited to work with all of you going forward. And of course, John, your leadership, it's really appreciated. I'm excited about these, you know, these are real tangible things that we're going to produce that the community will be able to enjoy and/or, you know, see. And I think that that is good for a city to do. Many of the things that we do is kind of like the underbelly, the plumbing, the finance, the, you know, things that you don't necessarily notice on a day-to-day basis. And I think that these activations of spaces and just concepts are really great for our city. And it's one of the many things that make it great. I love all of these and more. I'm excited. I got a little bit of an insight into the Jackalope Artist and Craft Fair. I think it's going to be really cool. They do have a track record in other communities, and I think will really energize the downtown area when that happens. And everything above. I really love it, and I appreciate all your work. Thank you. And Dustin, I forgot to say Dustin. I mean, talk about things that you, he's probably the most visible addition. The communications that have been going on, coming from this place, have been incredible. And I seriously thank you, Dustin, for the energy and creativity you've brought to our communications. Thanks, Mayor.
Thanks so much. Really appreciate the thoughtful presentation, all the work of the City Manager and the team, and welcome to folks who are new to us. Really appreciate all that you all do for the community and oversight for all of our departments. Just wanted to begin with that. And grateful to see sort of some of the work plan priorities. I don't want to rehash the ones that my colleagues have already lifted up, so plus one for that. Very excited for the community process for the former gun store that I know will be before us shortly. I'm happy to see that as a priority, as well as the reviewing of policies and procedures and just making sure that we're doing all that we can to be moving our city forward. So very grateful for that. So I just have a couple of questions. Are we, I know back, I think before Dustin joined us, we used to get like, and maybe we do still, I'm not sure, but we used to get like an overview of the hits, of how many people are visiting the site, how many folks are engaged, or, you know, just sort of the engagement metrics. And I'm curious if we have some data in terms of pre and post Dustin and how, sorry to say it that way, but...
Funny you should ask.
Yeah. I'm curious if we have that information because I hope and expect that it's increased quite a bit. But we'd love to hear more about that.
Honorable Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, I'm Dustin Kleeman, Communication and Public Information Manager. Grateful to be here and have joined in September. And we were pulling up those numbers just to be able to provide some of those. So we did an eight-year span, or I should say, eight-month span, just to see where, at least on the social media side, to be able to take a look to see what we're growing in engagement as well as followers.
Dustin, did you say eight years because it feels like eight years? Is that why you said that?
Very good.
I know. We run you ragged. I know. We appreciate you.
I do want to point out that we have seen vast improvement in engagement just with our social media and also trying to meet where our residents are, our community members are, and what they're engaging with. So that goes, anything from making sure that we tell them what's going on within our city bounds and the work that is being done on a city level, and also things that are adjacent to it. So trying to be a place where they can find information that is accurate, things that they can engage with, whether it be on the city level or even events, too, to make sure that they can bring their families out. But in that time, we have seen a 10% increase in followers, just over an eight-month span. And just so, I'll run through a couple of the numbers, too. 95% increase on new followers from when January to September, from September to May, if that's helpful to you. I know that's kind of a weird timeline, but just trying to do the eighth month to eighth month. Our impressions are up 180% in that time as well, reaching 1.6 million impressions. It's up 248% for users of 986,000 compared to 283.
Hold on, Dustin. We're going to need this in a check. Okay, there's too many numbers. Hold on.
Those numbers are a little much, and I'm happy to send this out to you afterward, too, and provide a little bit more context to those as well, so you can see the raw numbers and what we're seeing. But overall, we are seeing more people get in and just understanding what the city is doing. And that's the goal. And working with the city council members themselves, other departments, requesting needs that they may have, whether it comes to hiring or letting people know about new virtual planning appointments that they can do in the, you know, planning sector. Things that we're offering as a city and letting people know about it. That's my goal, and I continue to try to push out the opportunities of working with those departments. And then also being at events, too, and making sure that those are captured for all the things that we're doing as a city. Would you like more numbers? I'm happy to provide. I'm happy to provide.
I asked for the numbers and then had to slow down on the typing. It was, it was too much.
I'm sorry. I can go back a little bit too, if you would like.
I, well, I stopped at the 180 impressions and 1.6 million, I said, okay, we're doing good. So I just, I just took applause there. It sounds lovely. I don't know if folks have any other. I'm glad it's going well. I was sure it was, but it was, it's good that we have some data to back that up as well.
I do want to point out too, just in the next fiscal year, our goal is to continue our engagement through our GovDelivery System. We do find that we have more than 20,000 people engaged that we can outreach to, that we send out those City Council summaries every City Council meeting. We want to start doing monthly recaps and look-aheads too. So making sure people are very aware of upcoming meetings, whether it be for the general plan, parks plans, so people can understand that they have an opportunity to become engaged and make their voice heard. I do know, Mayor, that you had talked about really trying to meet people where they are and engage them. We'll continue to identify ways to make sure that people, there's no chance that they can say, I didn't hear about it. Because that is something that, you know, is heartbreaking, when they wanted to say something and they say, I just don't know where to get it. So really doing outreach to make sure on the email side, that people can see what's coming up, and if they've missed anything, and there's still opportunities to get engaged, that they can do so. That'll be something that we'll be rolling out in the new fiscal year.
Wonderful. I hope, and just as a, you're doing great, I wonder if there's more, because I know the school district also has like socials and a newsletter that they send, and I know that we're separate entities, but I just want to, I hope that there's like communication and, or, you know, so that we are aware of, in particular, I'm thinking about the cultural events that happen that might have some overlap with community members who might want to support. I'm not even sure if they're interested in this, but just wanted to make sure that there are lines of communication open with our school district, because they're doing some cool stuff too, and we're doing some cool stuff. So hopefully, there could be some coordination on the com side, if it's useful.
Yeah, and that's something we can totally explore further. I have been able to engage with a few of the other pages, businesses around here, the organizations, and that has been, we found very helpful, you know, doing collab posts and making sure that it's as big of audience as possible. So exploring with CCUSD and what we can do within those bounds would be absolutely helpful, for sure.
Wonderful. Thank you so much. We're happy to hear. It hasn't even been a year.
Hasn't even been a year.
Wow.
It's flown by. It's been, it's been a wonderful ride.
Feels like you've been here forever. My goodness, the eight years. Listen, if you would have, yeah, you're right.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right. Wonderful. My only other, because I know we're running longer than we planned, I feel like it's probably not necessary to ask the deficit question here as well, because I know that you all, as you govern the city, are looking to our budget and keeping that close. If you want to provide an answer, that's completely, if I have one teed up, feel free.
I do, Mayor.
Oh, wonderful, wonderful. I'm great, look at this. I'm excited. Okay.
No, I, I want to talk about this, because it could become real. And I, I've been through several of these in my career that haven't been theoretical, that have been real. And in this city, we, when I, during my first couple of years here, I think we reduced positions, we reduced the organization by 50 positions, because we were in very dire straits. And I've gone through that process in several other times in my career, and the simple answer is, given the fact that cities, 80% of our budget are, is personnel, the only way to deal with a fiscal shortfall is to reduce staff. And that means reducing services. You can't, you can't reduce staff without also a reduction in service level, which is also really challenging. What's happened in the past is that usually you, you freeze the hiring of positions, and then as they become vacant, you eliminate them. It's the, it's not the most tactical way to go about it, but you, because the, the pain ends up being felt unevenly throughout the organization. But nonetheless, when things are dire, that's, that's what ends up happening. And, and we, in city councils, myself, city managers, you end up being loathed to lay people off. So the, the more humane way to do it is to freeze vacancies and eliminate positions. It's typically what happens. That's what we did here, whatever that was, 10, 11, 12 years ago, whenever it was. But we're fortunate, we're not in that situation right now, but if we don't figure things out here in the next few years, at some point, we could be faced with that challenge. So Mayor, I appreciate the question. I think it's an important one, because it, hopefully, it's something we're able to avoid in the future, but if not, that's what we will be confronting.
I appreciate that, City Manager. And I hope that we can continue sort of this conversation about revenue and trying to think creatively about this crisis that we find ourselves in. It's not, the world is not going to end today or tomorrow, but it is something we need to be mindful of and thoughtful about. So I hope to continue, continue this important conversation moving forward, and appreciate your response. I just have two other super quick items that I was going to be my full time. As the racial equity action plan progresses, I hope that your team, I know with Director Anderson, will really be thinking about how to implement that action plan through, you know, across departments, so that there's continuity. And I know that role is no longer with your team, but the equity role is no longer under, under City Manager, but I just hope that there's like increased collaboration, particularly on that plan. I'm really hopeful for its success. So I just wanted to sort of flag that. I know we're still in the weeds and not yet to implementation, but just, it's critical, it's important, and I'm hopeful the City Manager and the team will, you know, have that as a priority. And my, my last question is mainly focused on how we're measuring success with our local emergency on homelessness? And if we, does it just renew annually, or is there an end date that we're thinking about? Or are there certain things that we're looking for that will bring us to a conclusion of that local emergency? Oh, sorry, Karen.
Mayor, we're going to be bringing to the council a lot of information and data regarding our efforts. Hopefully, we'll have an online dashboard available sometime this summer.
Wonderful.
And, you know, you know, we will end up looking to the council for guidance on, on how to proceed with regard to the emergency, and possibly the provision of this data will assist the council in that discussion.
Thank you so much, City Manager. So with that, not seeing any additional comments from my colleagues, thank you so much for the presentation. And is that the last one? Okay, my screen is not working here. So thank you very much. We're a little behind. I think, I think we said 4:30 yesterday, so that's, that's all right. So we're concluding this action item. Just to be clear, this is going to come back before us again when?
June 10th.
June 10th is the adoption of the budget in the public hearing.
Okay. So if folks have additional questions, they reach out to department heads in terms of community, just to have that clear in terms of feedback, whether it's council or the community in public, is there a specified person to reach out to for questions? Is it CFO sober for more questions?
Mayor, that would be ideal. That's what I would recommend.
Okay, sounds good. I just wanted to make sure that was clear for the public. All right. Thank you. We're officially concluded with A1 until June 10th. Are there any additional public comments that are not on the agenda? Yes?
Yes, we have Denise Neal who'd like to speak, and I'm not on the agenda.
Thank you. Good afternoon, one more time, Honorable Mayor, Councilmembers, and community at large. I have a question about our meeting tomorrow and some of the other possible ways that we can increase revenue for the city in anticipation of this deficit we see coming. I'd like to know if we can do some type of collaborative fundraising events for not only the Olympics, but 2026 FIFA and the Super Bowl 2027? Are there any arts and cultural events that we can build up themed on those events? Something that we can use to monetize, you know, based on our strengths in the culturally, well, the creative economy? What can we do to prepare for those events and make money from them?
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Neal.
And the Vice Mayor said, go to the meeting tomorrow. Is there any additional comments? All right. Thank you so much. Do we have any items from members? Do we, I'm so sorry. Oh, so we're going to do, and I can't, my screen is not working, but I would like to, yeah, I don't know, it kicked me out a while ago, so I just pulled the agenda up on my own. We've been making a work here. I did want to do an adjournment request in memory of, excuse me now, I'm trying to find it. No, but I'm happy to do a co-request. Sounds good. There was, or is, a, there was an announcement by the superintendent for CCUSD, and a middle school English language arts teacher, Jeff Glenn, passed unexpectedly, well-beloved English teacher in our community here. So just wanted to amplify that, and I can't make the motion, so if someone could do it for me.
I can make it on your behalf. Okay. We have a motion by Councilmember O'Brien, Vice Mayor O'Brien, a second by Councilmember Erickson. Please vote.
Aye.
The time is 5:24. All members who are present have voted. We are adjourned.
Thank you.
Thanks, everyone.
Just want to double check, I don't have anything to sign, right? I do?